Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting, February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, called Order. We are conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom. Members of the public will and listen to the meeting live online through the city's website, as noted on the agenda. Please join the commission now in the flag salute led by Commissioner Watts and commissioners. If you remember, please turn off your video.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, that was a timed event. Okay. Derek, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, but first, as a reminder for staff, consultants, and applicants, please turn your video off and put yourselves on mute until your item comes up. Moving on to our roll call, Commissioner Gario.
Still here.
Commissioner Taliio.
Here.
Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Here.
Commissioner Watts.
Here.
And Commissioner Yeomans.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment in the item?
I have no public comments.
Okay, seeing that, we'll move to consent calendar. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Planning Commission request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Under that, we have the recommendation for approval of the action minutes of January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Yeomans.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Watts. Can we have the vote, please?
Commissioner Gario.
Aye.
Commissioner Taliio.
Aye.
Commissioner Turley Trejo.
You're on mute, Commissioner.
That's why.
There you go.
I'm like, so moved, second, okay, aye.
We need to be adept at reading lips, apparently, I see.
Apparently.
Okay, so that passes five oh, I assume, right?
Commissioner Yeomans.
Aye. Yes, sir, passes five oh.
Okay, moving on to business.
I believe I wasn't recorded, haven't I?
Oh, you too? Okay, now we're five oh, right? Okay, wow. Okay, moving on to commission business. We have a budget engagement session. Staff report by our Director of Finance, Jennifer Hennessy. Hi, Jennifer.
Hi, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, I will share my screen here quickly. Before I do that, I want to first thank you for the opportunity to present to you guys tonight. And I wanted to also introduce our Budget Manager, Tricia Hawk, who's also on the Zoom call here, right over there.
Hi, Tricia.
I have a brief presentation and then some discussion questions at the end. Let me share my PowerPoint. All right. Everyone see that, okay? Great, so, as many of you know, the budget items come to the Planning Commission towards the end of the budget cycle historically, and I know that you guys have all been through this several times, but you typically will see all the CIP or the capital projects and look at them and then determine whether they are consistent with the general plan. So hopefully, you're familiar with that process. New this year, in a response to council members requesting that we increase engagement earlier on in the process, as well as in accordance with the Government Finance Officers Association, who oversees the budget award program, they've increased their recommendation or they've asked in their recommendations to increase both commissioner, council, and public engagement in the budgets cycle. So we are holding these budget engagement sessions early on in the cycle so that we can gain your feedback, present that to the council when we present the proposed budget in May, and, you know, potentially influence the recommendations that will go into that budget. So let me get started here. We'll do a very brief overview of the budget process, a couple of key budget policies that impact the recommendations in each year's budget. I'll touch on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, our current year highlights, and then some discussion questions at the end. So the budget process really begins in January of each calendar year, and that's when we look at the current year's budget and we update it for the current trends and things that might be changing, new information that we receive. And then we also update our five-year financial projections. And those documents are presented to the council in February. We call it our mid-year budget update. And then we also use that information to kick off the next year's budget, annual budget, annual operating budget, and CIP, utilizing the information that we have at that time. And then, as I mentioned, new this year, between February and March, we're holding the budget engagement sessions with each board and commission in hopes to gain feedback on priorities and projects and programs, things of that nature. And then through the months of March and April, that's really when all the departments, the staff, the budget analysts, the department directors, city manager's office, we all work together to propose, to put together the proposed annual budget and the capital improvement program. And then that document, those documents both together are presented to the council at their budget workshop in May. And then any changes that the council recommends in May, we incorporate into a final budget, which is presented and then subsequently adopted by the council at their first meeting in June. And then throughout the year, we do ongoing analysis of budget versus actuals for revenues and expenditures and update the budgets as need be throughout the year. There are several different tools and sources of information that are utilized to build the budget and the recommended appropriations. The Community Satisfaction Survey, we'll be launching one of those fairly soon. It's been a few years since we've done that, but that really gave, gives the community the opportunity to tell the council and us what they like, what they want to see more of, and really helps us prioritize the funding that is in both the CIP and the operating budget. The boards and commissions' feedback, that's what we're doing right now, added to our process. And then, of course, any prior year projects or programs that were started, that typically takes priority on the budget funding so that those projects could get completed in a timely manner. There are several master plans for programs and services. One of the most recent is the Community Services Master Plan. That information helps build our CIP recommendations, as well as operating budget. And then finally, council policies. And we'll look at a couple of those policies shortly here. The key deliverables throughout the budget process is the original or the preliminary budget that's developed between March and April, and that contains all of the departmental requests that's presented to the city manager. And then the city manager makes his recommendations, and that creates what's called the proposed budget. And that's what's presented to the council in May at their budget workshop. And the hope is that these budget engagement sessions will, any recommendations that come out of these sessions will be included in the proposed budget. And then finally, again, in June, the adopted budget is approved by the council for both the operating budget as well as the capital improvement program. So there's a couple of key policies that influence the appropriation priorities. When there's a surplus balance in the general fund, which means revenues exceeded expenditures, so we have year-end savings or surplus, that surplus can be appropriated for one-time uses only because it is a one-time source of funds. And the budget policy actually has this prioritization order where public safety equipment or non-recurring programs would take first priority. And then adding to the asset management reserves, so these are things like our fleet replacement, our technology replacement, so they're building up little savings accounts so that we have the funds to replace the roof on this building when it, you know, when it starts to leak, or a new server in IT, things like that. The third priority are capital improvement projects. The fourth is the reduction of any unfunded liabilities we have related to CalPERS pension or other post-employment retiree benefits. And then finally, a reduction or avoidance of city debt. Another key policy is the appropriation guidelines that were established when Measure S, the one-cent sales tax, was approved back in two thousand and sixteen. We started receiving the funds in two thousand and seventeen. But these guidelines show that the first priority, again, will be public safety, and then asset management, and third is the capital improvement projects, and then fourth is general services or what is predominantly funding for community services. And then as time goes by, as the general services and public safety costs increase, less and less will be available for capital projects. But you can see in two thousand and twenty-one, we've appropriated about twenty-four million dollars spread out between those different categories, as indicated on the pie chart. So looking at the general fund, which is the city's primary operating fund, it's unrestricted so long as the appropriations are for a public purpose. The general fund currently is projecting revenue of just over eighty-one million dollars. And the key to this chart is showing the black line, which is exceeding the expenditures or the blue bars, which means that our revenues are larger than our expenditures and that we are structurally balanced throughout the five-year period here. On the expenditure side of the general fund, you can see that the majority of the funds are spent on public safety, with police at forty-six percent, fire at thirteen percent, and then community development, public works, admin, and then non-departmental, just over seventy-nine million dollars. And then third, for the general fund, this is a projection of our fund balance. We are currently looking at a fund balance of twenty-eight point eight million for the end of this fiscal year. Of that amount, we have just over nineteen million in reserves, and then we have one point two, just under one point two million, committed to future capital projects with an available fund balance of seven point seven million. The good thing on this chart is showing that the desired reserve, which is indicated by the yellow dots, is met each and every year. So that's the policy level reserves of twenty-five percent of the general fund expenditures. That amount, we will be able to meet and/or exceed in each of the five years throughout the forecast. So that's a very enviable position to be in in government finance these days. So this slide summarizes the CIP that was adopted last June. We have a very large CIP, as you well know, eighty-four projects, over six hundred and twenty-three million dollars of cost. And of that, five hundred and fourteen million is funded. So the CIP program is a five-year forecast. The first two years, all the projects are funded, and then project costs that are out in years three, four, and five sometimes have not yet been identified. So we include all of that to show the full cost of each project. And then, as you might recall, these were some of the larger projects or are some of the larger projects in each category. So within the circulation projects, there's twenty-five of them totaling over five hundred million dollars. The largest, of course, is the French Valley Parkway Phase Two, and that reflects the fifty million dollar infragrant, federal grant that we received last year. There's the Nicholas Road Extension and Improvements, multiple payment rehab projects, the I-15 congestion relief project, and then traffic signal for the park and ride. And then infrastructure projects, there's forty-one totaling about seventy-four and a half million dollars. The Margarita Rec Center is probably the largest one in that category. And then the others there, I don't need to read each of them, you're probably very familiar with each of them. And then Parks and Rec Projects, sixteen of them totaling nearly thirty or twenty-six million. The CRC Splash Pad and Shade Structures, one point one million. And then the others that are listed there. And then the large one is a, it's an ongoing project to upgrade and enhance the playground equipment at the various park sites, those of which are listed there. We have a little over five million dedicated to those. And then we have three projects for Sarda. One is a placeholder, but these other two are in the budget at ten million dollars for the Los Haciendas Affordable Housing Project, and then Vine Creek Affordable Housing Projects budgeted at two point seven million. So that summarizes where we are budgetarily, as well as the process. So these are the questions that we want to pose to each of you and start a discussion and gain some feedback that we can potentially bring back to the council in May or utilize some information to feed into our proposed budget that will be presented in May. First question is, as a planning commissioner, do you feel that the city's investment of financial resources is in line with the community's priorities? And then if so, which programs or projects do you feel are most beneficial to the community? And then if not, how could the city better align its spending with community priorities? So with those questions in mind, I can, I'll stop sharing my presentation so we can, everybody can see everybody, and we can begin the discussion. First of all, do you have, does anybody have any questions on what I presented?
Let's start with Commissioner Taliio. John, are you there?
I am.
There you are. Any questions for Jennifer?
Only the fact that I think when we did the community outreach, we gained a lot from that, and I'm sure that'll be part of this issue. But to gauge the community's interest in things that we're going to be looking at is important to me, and I think it was to them. So I'm all for doing that, and I have no questions yet on this. But I appreciate the way the city is bringing that to us early, so we can look at it and build on it.
Great, thank you.
Great. Commissioner Turley Trejo?
You're on mute.
You're on mute again.
I'm trying to reduce any background noise. Okay. Yeah, I agree with John and what he just said with bringing this to us early, Jennifer. I think it makes us feel like we're more of the process instead of just kind of after the fact. So I think that's really a great improvement. Also, I was involved in the outreach, which was really good. And I think actually, I'll have more comments on that with the questions that you've asked, but I don't really have any questions for you per se at this moment. But thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Yeomans.
Well, based upon the question you put on this screen, I guess I look at it kind of a different ways. Why do people come to Temecula? Why do they move to this area? And my answer is for the lifestyle, the schools, the affordable housing, which is not so affordable anymore, and the safety. And if you look at the way you put the budget together, it meets those line items, I think. So I'm saying, if I look at why people are here, do we meet their expectations? The answer is yes.
Commissioner Watts?
We're not answering the three questions right now. We're just, any questions for Jennifer? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. No, I have no questions. I just, my compliments to Jennifer. That was a good presentation. And your presentation of boiling down, very difficult material, is much appreciated. Good level and everything. Nice job.
Thank you.
Jennifer, you and your staff do a tremendous job every year. I know you've been given awards for it. Congratulations for that. As far as answering those questions, the answer is yes, yes, yes. I don't know how we could do any better. When we're looking at a city our size with a reserve of nineteen million dollars, we don't have to touch that. That's been impressive to me for years. We've always maintained that reserve, if I'm correct, right? I know being in League of Cities, or sometimes you're sitting around the table and you're saying, oh, we're broke, we're broke. And they come to Temecula and say, well, we have a reserve. So it's just, just great, the way you folks run things and work with the council. And thank you for finally including us early on in the project. It seems refreshing. So I don't have any questions other than those comments. So I guess we could go back to questions again?
Great. You want me to read the first question again?
Sure.
It was, as a planning commissioner, do you feel the investment of financial resources is in line with the community's priorities?
Commissioner Taliio.
Oh, again, it was a mixed bag when we went through the community again, early on in our existence here. And I think we gained a lot from that, as I said earlier. But they weren't all peaches and roses. I remember there were a lot of complaints, a lot of, I didn't like this, I don't like that, what happened to this? And it was a point where people could vent, and I guess it has its purpose. But there is that, and we have to work around some of that, perhaps early if we can, if we get to look at this early, and try to figure out what our neighbors are wanting, like and don't like, and build that into the system. Because the system's working. It's just trying to get that across to our people and have them understand what's going on, what kind of work that Jennifer and her crew are doing, and keeping us on a level track. It's amazing. I know what you're saying about the communities in our area about trying beer and not feeling like they can handle it. Some of them are losing. We're not. We're ahead of the game, and that wasn't due to anything but strong effort by the people that we put our trust in. So I appreciate the opportunity to get in the game early, as I said earlier. I think that's important, but also because it allows us to bring some of the information we gather from the community into the process early, in addition to the community's outreach meeting.
Do you have any specific information that you've received from constituents that might influence the budget, or?
Not, not, and so I guess it's going to be part of the process. I think people don't come up with anything but when's that light going to come in, things like that. But for it to be part of the process, the process to be ongoing, I think.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Turley Trejo?
Yes, and I appreciate that question. First of all, I think public safety is a huge thing in this city, and so I love seeing that that's the biggest piece of the pie. I think that's extremely important as to why we have a safe city. Obviously, I do have concerns with Old Town. And I think hopefully, things are, you know, being worked on there. But that's where some of our problems are. And so I think we really need to figure out solutions there in Old Town, for sure. Another thing, very positive, also what Ron was saying, I love that we save for a rainy day, right? For five years of a rainy day. And I think that's tremendous and says a lot about how, you know, the direction our city council and city staff and everybody is, what direction they're going. And I think that's, like I said, tremendous. So that's amazing. And then as far as the community outreach, I think there were a couple of things there that I wonder if that's where our money is going. One of them is, I know we have a hot team, and I, just because I've had a, actually, my husband's had a personal experience trying to help somebody get off the street. It's much more difficult than it should be in some ways. And so I don't know, you know, who we can really or how we can really expedite that so they don't have to go to Riverside County for everything to be able to get off the street. And so the process is very lengthy and long for someone to actually be able to do that. And the only reason I say that is because we experienced it. I wouldn't have known that otherwise. So that's one area. I think as far as community services, you know, we do a tremendous job with parks, events, which we haven't been able to have this year, but they've done them online kind of thing. I know that when I was sitting in those outreach sessions, one of the big things that was talked about was pickleball. And so I would love to see that come to fruition, to actually have a complex, you know, for pickleball, a pickleball community. We have so many people using the four courts that we have. So that's, that's one area that the community, when you ask if I have constituents, I do, who are saying, please, you know, give us more room to be able to do that. So I think that's definitely one thing. The improvements at the CRC have been great. I swim there, so I see that. I know there's people that want a bigger swimming kind of complex, which would be nice. So that's another area. I think that was it that I had, but I, for that question, I just think with the homeless area of making, kind of streamlining that process somehow, for those that really have a desire to get off the streets, and, and then that pickleball area that people I know in the outreach sessions were, we're talking about a lot. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Yeomans.
Well, I already answered the question. I'm backwards, reverse, I'm sorry. But I'll go back and say that I agree with my fellow commissioners, that the presentation is flawless every year, and I do appreciate the idea that we do kind of a nice reserve to fall back on because it makes it easier. We sleep better at night. As far as other projects, I mean, I'd be interested in Commissioner Trejo's, Trejo's concerns about Old Town specifically.
Do you want me to answer that right now?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Well, I know there's been specific establishments that have not been good players in Old Town. And as far as the liquor, and as far as bringing in kind of a riffraff, and so there's been some problems down there. There's been where they've had to have, you know, police presence there. I know a couple of times they've had the sober checks, which I hopefully have helped. But I just think we got to be on top of it, you know, for us to, if you've been down there at night in Old Town when it's later, it's pretty rowdy. And some of that is what we wanted, having, I think, as a, you know, long-range plan of bringing life to Old Town. But I think along with that, there has to be that safety that we feel is so important in the city. We have to really be on that. And this is a family-friendly city. So if a family can't go there at night, that's a problem. So when you talk about families moving here, I think they should also be able to go to Old Town, not just, not just others. And so I think maybe we're bringing in some out-of-towners that aren't the greatest for our community. And I just think we need to be really aware and stay on top of it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Watts?
Yeah, in response to the first question, I, from what little I know, I think that, yeah, pretty much the spending is in line with community preferences. I will, I will note that, though, in that I believe that the vast majority of people we don't hear from, council doesn't hear from, the commissions don't hear from. We do a great job, and my hats off to staff for reaching out and doing outreach on all of these issues. But I still think there's a big chunk of people in Temecula that either aren't aware of what's going on on these types of things, or just don't have the time, or particularly in this pandemic time, maybe it's just not important enough for them. So I would just say that, yeah, I think we're headed in the right direction. And certainly, we don't hear that we're not, at least not much. But I would caution that in that there's still a vast, most people in town that we may not really have most people in town that uh we may not really have an idea if they're happy with it or not, but that's the way the system works. So I would say just keep that in the back mind. Some specific um pluses are, number one, I am pleased as punch to see that the police department has the biggest chunk of the budget. Uh, I think the community wants that. Uh, I don't think there's a finer police department around, and I have dealt with the police department employees, various ones, not in a bad way, all in positive, uh, just friendly contacts. Uh, and I tell you, I am so impressed with every officer I've run into. They are so helpful and nice, and it really reflects on Temecula, so. With my background, of course, I'm going to, I'm going to appreciate the police and fire funding, and I think they do a great job every day, and it's unfortunate there's been so much discord and uh disapproval uh directed at police officers who do nothing but put their their life on the line every day uh and pretty much go unappreciated other than by their family or people that take the time to tell them, we appreciate what you're doing. So uh that's my little soapbox uh area, and I I'd like to say that other positive things, no doubt, Community Services does a great job. I told commis- our uh council members in the gar and commentaral um when they were still on the council, that I thought the the access park at Margarita Park was one of the greatest things I've ever seen government do. Uh, people from all over come to that that water park to play, especially kids that don't have the opportunity to do that. So I've always thought that that's one of the best things Temecula's ever done, and and I love the way Community Service does that. I've seen at the CRC in the morning from eight o'clock to nine o'clock, who's in the gym. It's a senior hour, believe it or not. And uh I went in there a few times to shoot a few baskets. And I saw a portion of our community that most people don't ever see, and uh these are really developmentally disabled adults um who spend a lot of time in our parks. And it's uh it's encouraging to see that the city is is providing those facilities. It's discouraging to see um, I guess, the level of involvement with people who need more he- help in those areas, but I know we're trying our best. So I would just say, continue on Community Services, you're doing a great job. Um, the one area that I would like to see that I've heard over and over again, and I think this plays into what I mentioned earlier as far as maybe we're not hearing as much, is I think the city ought to really consider or continue to expand its outreach to seniors, the senior population. Uh, just on my street alone, there's just not as many children anymore. There hasn't been for a long time, and our city is aging, and I know we're doing a great job to try to address that, but I think we probably need to push harder. And I think there's a lot of people out there that just either, once again, don't have the opportunity to speak up, or just uh for whatever reason, don't do it. So um I think that there's a there is a lot of people out there that might think that there's areas to expand. The senior center we have now is fantastic. I'm not sure if we're planning on in uh expanding those in the Margarita uh facility, but that would certainly be a great spot for it. Uh, the other great program, I think, continues to need to be um funded is the homeless outreach team, uh homeless response team. I do a lot of walking in the city, as you folks all know, and I see a lot uh what's out there. And there are people on the street right now in Temecula that I'm scared of. Um, and I don't think it's just because they're homeless. I think there's a lot of mental uh responses that are that are contributing to some people having a difficult time, and and it does create a rather uneasy feeling when you're walking down the street and you and you encounter one of these things, so. My hats off to the team. I see what they're doing out there, and and I think our aggressive approach, the city's aggressive approach to trying to resolve these issues in a positive way, but still be firm about it is priceless. And I won't mention cities, but all you have to do is drive down a certain state highway called seventy-six. And you can see the difference between Temecula and uh some encampments that are just right along the side of the road that are just sad, really, from all perspective, it's just sad. So uh I think that the city appreciates what's going on there. I know that the city has devoted a lot of resources to that effort, and I think it's paying off, and I think they need to be complimented and patted on the back once in a while for that. And uh specific programs, you know, uh, those are the ones that I'm most happy with. Uh, I hope we continue to value our open space and our parks. I think that provides a great opportunity for folks. Uh, I continue to think of all the great cities in the east that took the time to build their parks and have statues and and sculpture and that type of thing. Um, and how great those cities are now, two hundred years later, a hundred years later. And I know we're doing a great job too. This is not a uh you know, critique in any way, shape, or form, it's just, I think that there's real benefits for the future, uh, if we look far enough ahead in those responses. And I know, I know that there's no complaints on the city, but I just hope that we continue to emphasize that part of our uh our lifestyle. I think that's a big part of Temecula, and I know that the city brags about what we started with and what we have now, and it's really something to be proud of. So um anyhow, that's a lot of hot air for me. I'm probably contributing to greenhouse gases. So I I did want to give you some of my thoughts, Jennifer, and I appreciate having the time to think about this uh earlier today, so uh I hope that helps you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, it's my turn, and I've already said it. Um, I concur with everything that's been said tonight. You hear a lot of complaints, but our city's always stepped up. I mean, we go back thirty-two years or even beyond that, but thirty-two years almost. And uh we had maybe one signal in the entire city. Now look where we're coming. So we've addressed our traffic issues uh in a very uh very, very difficult times, very hard times, and it's it's all coming to fruition. Some of the stuff we talked about back in the early nineties uh took planning, it took money, we didn't have much. Uh, so look at how far we've come. Wish we could get the highway out there. The freeway expanded like we were promised back in the nineties, but maybe someday. That's not our problem. Anyhow, it's being worked on. You know, we had one sports park here in town back then. Now we have almost three, working on the third one. Uh, people wanted skateboard park. Our council members went out, looked and found, found out how to do it. We funded it, it was great, we got it. They wanted bike parks, they wanted bike lanes. We've done, I don't know how many miles of of bicycle paths we we have now. So everything that people have wanted, we've stepped up and and addressed. And I think that's uh, I forget which commissioner said it, but that's one of the reasons why people come here to visit wine country or Pachanga, they end up coming back and living here or opening a business here. Uh, because you all have done things right all these years. And uh it's just, you know, it's heartwarming to see that. I I do a lot of traveling across the country, and uh, believe me, it's uh nice to come back home and and uh see what we have. Uh, we're very fortunate for a city our size. Um, and we have great staff at all levels, uh, doing just a tremendous job. Can't say enough about that. So thank you for the presentation. It was great. Uh, I hope we were able to give you some feedback that you can use.
Definitely.
You got anything else to say?
Well, we have two other questions.
Oh, Mr. Butler, by all means, speak up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for uh for giving us this valuable feedback. This is the first time and the first one of these. Um, we sat down with Luke earlier today and wanted to make sure he was comfortable with us coming before you. Jennifer and her team put together the presentation. And we, y- you gave us exactly what we were looking for, dialogue, feedback, um, good, bad, what you're looking to see and what you're looking to hear. So um the rest of the commissions are going to benefit from you guys leading the charge here, and I just wanted to say thank you for uh for letting us come before you this evening, and uh you'll see some good work come before this.
Well, thank you, sir. It's always a pleasure to see uh members of staff in the hierarchy come down to our lonely little planning commission meeting and 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 meet with us. We appreciate it. Thank you.
See, Jennifer, I told you.
They finally let, well, they haven't let me out yet. I'm still in my office. Just how it goes.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If anybody has anything else, going once, going twice.
All right, wait, wait, ah. So did we answer all three questions or just the one?
No, you didn't.
All three were answered.
All three answered. Okay. Um, I did. What?
Very good feedback.
Okay, I did have one um thought, added thought that um and this is kind of, I think, for planning, but I think like when my kids come back, I raised four boys. We were, I didn't do it by myself, my husband. We raised four boys here in Temecula. We've been here since eighty-seven, and um, when they come back, they're like, wow, you know, this is such a beautiful city. And and that doesn't just happen, right? And I and I um think about those that have planned through the years, like Ron was saying, for this to happen, like it doesn't just happen. And so I love that you want our feedback because we have to continue to make it happen in order to keep on this path, right, that we're on. And so it's not just going to happen. We have to continue and do things that are positive to help the city be safe with the homeless situation, like um what Gary was saying. You know, just today, we were down playing pickleball in the afternoon, because that's the time that at least you can get on the courts. And there was a young woman just screaming, just sitting on a bench and just screaming. And I was like, okay, what do I do? What do I do with her? You know, what do, like, what process do we go? Not what do I do with her, but it was like, obviously, there was something wrong. And so somehow making that um applicable, right, to to citizens in the community on what do they do? I know we have an app. I I understand that. I know we do, but does all of the city know that? Do people in the city, I know that because I'm a planning commissioner, but kind of what Gary Watts was saying, what do the other people in the city know this? And I know we try to get the word out. I know it's hard, but even me having an app, I'm kind of like, okay, like, what do I do? Like, who do I really contact? Because I felt bad for her, but she was, you know, it was extremely disrupting, and um I'm sure she was maybe on medication or drugs or something, but um it's kind of like those situations, you're like hit with it all of a sudden, what do you do? What do you do to make our cities feel there were kids around, little kids around? We're here at Margarita Park, you know, like Gary was talking about, that great water park. And so right in the middle of the day, not at night, you know, and um so I think it's kind of like knowing knowing what to do in that situation, who we actually call for that situation to help. And so I just need to look at my app again, probably, and figure out what I need to do. But um but I think getting that word out to other people in the community that want to do something, want to do something to help, and they're really not sure how.
Yeah. Uh, Commissioner, if I if I may, uh, you're you're giving me an idea for another um department presentation from our Community Services Department. Um, and maybe our hot team um to come in and talk about those specific items.
That would be great.
Yeah, you know, what what exactly do you do when you encounter this situation? And I know they have a whole protocol for all that, who you call. We have a, we have the hot team. We also have
Right.
swag, which is in, which is a community on-the-ground team that um, you know, uh, works with folks who are out there experiencing homelessness. So um maybe that's something we'll look into and we'll bring back. And then you, as commissioners, can go back out into the community, and you'll have something to say. Have all the right things to say to uh all the folks that uh come to you for questions.
I literally almost texted Aaron, you know, but I was like, he has a lot to do. I probably don't need to text him, but um, so I think, you know, that would be great to have just kind of something streamlined, so we know how to get that, disseminate that information out to the community. To keep our community safe.
Yeah, I think that's something that we'll look into. I'll talk to Director Hawkins about uh maybe having some of his team come in and talk to this group about um of those those specific issues that you're bringing up. I think that'd be a good, good thing.
Awesome. Thank you.
That's a great idea, Luke, and uh Commissioner, thank you for that feedback. We've just started implementing a uh electronic monthly newsletter from the city manager's office. And so we'll try to incorporate some of this feedback into that, that reaches fifty-two thousand people every time it goes out, so.
Yeah.
Uh, appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
And on various levels, going back over the years, when I was on the traffic commission, uh, we used to put blurbs in the local newspaper about uh new traffic laws that were being implemented in the coming years. Uh, so people would know it. That got a lot of positive uh feedback from it. Uh, I think at the planning level, um, citywide, we could do the same thing. We have. It's not like we haven't addressed these issues in the past. I remember we had these little uh magnetic things for your refrigerator. As an example, if you have a non-emergency, uh, what number do you call for the police department? I will bet you that nine out of ten people in town don't know which number. They go to nine-one-one.
Right.
So it's things like that I think you're talking about. Uh, first of all, people have to want to get involved, which is an issue these days. They don't. Uh, but again, that information has been put out in the past. I think we need to keep doing it. And uh going back to Mr. Butler, you know, if you can uh, you know, address that with other other commissions or or departments. Uh, but it has been done. We just need to keep up with it.
Appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, this was a receiving file item, so there'll be no roll call vote, and we will move on then to the public hearing. Stuart.
Thank you, Jennifer. That was great. Thank you.
Hey, uh, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Any person may submit written comments to the planning commission before or during a public hearing in support or opposition to uh the approval of the projects in the manner prescribed and the important notice at the top of the agenda. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the planning commission may file an appeal to the planning commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within fifteen calendar days after the planning commission's decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thanks, Stuart. Uh, we have planning application number PA twenty dash eleven twenty-seven. It's a conditional use permit to allow an alcoholic beverage control type seventy license for Staybridge Suites located at twenty-seven thousand five hundred Jefferson Avenue. And I believe, honey, we have a staff report.
Yes, I do. Let me share my screen. One moment. All right, everybody can see this, right? Okay, so this is Staybridge Suites Type Seventy Conditional Use Permit, Planning Application PA twenty eleven twenty-seven. This application is a conditional use permit for Staybridge Suites to obtain a Type Seventy ABC license, uh, which is the on-sale general restrictive uh license type. So um below I show renderings of the hotel, and uh just as a refresher, this is still under construction. It's a four-story, hundred-twenty-four-room hotel. The site is generally located approximately seven-hundred-fifty feet south of Winchester Road, and it is on Jefferson Avenue. The conditional use permit will allow the Type Seventy ABC license, again, it's that on-sale general restrictive license type, which will permit beer, wine, and distilled spirits. However, uh, per the applicant and as written in their statement of operations, there will be no distilled spirits sold or served um in this hotel. Alcohol, beer, and wine uh is sold through the Market Pantry, and that is from six AM to two AM, so that's a small market uh in the lobby area. And then alcohol, beer, and wine and a meal is also complimentary, and this is served Monday through Wednesday, five-thirty PM through seven-thirty PM. Uh, it's known as their social hour, and this is done in the great room and buffet area. Uh, and with this conditional use permit, uh, live entertainment is not proposed, so they do not have any live entertainment component um with the conditional use permit. Uh, here we see the first floor of the hotel. The area highlighted in red is that Market Pantry area. Uh, it's about a hundred square feet, and this is where alcohol, uh, beer, wine, snacks, food. Other miscellaneous things are are available for purchase from six AM to two AM. And then the area highlighted in green, which equates about two thousand square feet, this is the buffet and great room area. Um, also where the great um social hour is with the complimentary meal and drinks. This project exist is This project is exempt from CEQA per section one five three zero one, class one existing facilities. It is also exempt from CEQA per section one five zero six one B three under the common sense exemption. Uh, with that said, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project subject to the proposed resolution and recommend a recommended conditions of approval. Uh, in here, uh, we also have uh Richard Garcia, who's a regional manager uh that is available to answer any questions. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, honey. I'm going to go uh individually to uh commissioners for questions, but I have one first. Uh, type seventy is uh primarily given to uh suite-type hotels and motels that do like a happy hour where they're serving food. Is that correct?
That's correct. Um, it is typical for hotels, motels. Uh, most hotels do opt for the distilled spirits. However, that is not a part of this um Staybridge Suites Hotel.
Okay, great. Okay, let me go to Commissioner Taliio. Are you there? John, any questions?
Yeah, I was putting away the monster. Um, I wanted to get it straight in my mind, but you you can purchase and consume on-site alcohol, not distilled spirits, but the others we mentioned. And and off bit off uh premises and on premises, but it can't be served. Is that what I'm hearing?
So alcohol can be consumed for um consumption on the premises. Um, the police uh did condition the project that, you know, there's no drinking in public or anything like that. I've also clarified with the applicant, there is no uh room service where you can order uh any alcohol alcoholic beverages. The pantry market area does sell beer and wine only from six AM to two AM. And again, the um social hour will be Monday through Wednesday. Uh, it's a two-hour slot between five thirty to seven thirty PM where um beer, wine, and uh complimentary meal is uh is available.
But the many bars themselves in hotel room?
There's not many bars.
No many bars?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Trontrill.
Um, yeah, so that answers a little bit of my question, but so the type seventy and type forty-seven. Um, I I guess I didn't realize that the type seventy had distilled spirits also. Um, I thought that was beer and wine for the um hotel suites. So I didn't realize that had distilled spirits also, which is also in a type forty-seven, correct?
The type forty-seven is specifically for restaurants. Um, but ABC
But it's beer and wine and distilled spirits, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so ABC uh has this ABC type seventy license that's more um geared towards um towards hotels and motels. And the one distinguishing factor um or unique factor is that um alcoholic beverages uh can be served complimentary. So it's sold and it's complimentary. But uh what Staybridge does is they've narrowed it down to the two-hour window in their social hour.
Okay, and when you say they can't drink in public, they can't drink outside the hotel in public. You're not talking about, obviously, they are drinking in public with other people in the hotel.
Yeah, what the Staybridge is doing is they've confined the social hour drinking area. Uh, you look at the screen here, uh, it's all contained within the great room and the buffet area. And there is um food served there. So um that's what what they proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Watts.
I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Yuman.
No, this project seems consistent with other hotel properties we've done with, but I do have one question. Since we are um given the license that does in theory include distilled spirits, but he's opting not to utilize that. Would he have to come back in if he decided to change and sell distilled spirits?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, it would be a modification to the conditional use permit, and it would
Thank you.
back to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Okay, the only the only issue I have with this particular license, when you look at the definition of it, um, and I think you mentioned it, honey. Usually these these suite-type hotels and motels where they have the happy hour and they have meals and they're sometime giving away beer and wine to do it. It's it's uh it's the guests and people that they can invite in if if according to the definition of ABC. I've I've seen this get out of control, so when the applicant comes up, maybe we can discuss that. Um, I don't know what we can do with it. It's really a management issue, but it 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 has gotten out of control. I've 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 seen it. That being the case, uh, if there are any more questions, the staff will open the public hearing. And Stuart?
As a reminder, any public comments that were received by email and mail prior to this meeting will be read into the record. Any person wishing to submit comments during the meeting must submit comments via email prior to the close of the public hearing for the comment to be considered as part of the record. The email address where comments can be submitted can be found on the window.
Thank you. Okay, does the, can we take this graphic down so we can go back to the full screen? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Crawford, would you like to address us in any way or Mr.?
Yeah, I'm the general manager of the hotel, and we just thank you for the opportunity to be here today.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
So in regards to the issue that I have, um, sometimes this thing gets out of control when you're allowing guests to invite people in to this situation. How do you manage that?
Uh, let me take this down, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Um, so uh I we have quite a bit of Staybridges, a and this is a a model that we uh uh that Staybridge bottle uses. We have the social hour for five thirty to seven thirty. Um, what's unique about us is there is a uh salaried manager, whether it's an AGM or a GM, is the one serving the drinks, and uh they are able to help themselves to the buffet, to the light fare, um, to the meals. But it is a uh a manager actually serving the complimentary drinks. Uh, so if if we see anything getting out of control, and it has happened, then we have the absolute right to just cut it off. And that's what um as a company, we take that very responsible. You know, we don't want our other patrons, our other guests of the hotel also being uh or anybody be in the nuisance to our other guests of the hotel. So we take uh security and um the responsibility very serious.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Um. Commissioners, have any questions of the applicant?
Um, not really a question, but I appreciate the fact that you're not doing distilled spirits. Um, I think that's helpful to keeping control in a situation, at least. Um, and just kind of my concerns like with Ron of, you know, keeping things contained. And um and I drove out there and looked at it today. It looks like it's going to be a really nice hotel, really big. And I love that we're getting those in in our our um Jefferson uptown, you know, it's kind of happening. So that's kind of fun. Um, so that is really nice and big. And so would be unfortunate to have that situation, right, in a nice new hotel. So hopefully that can be contained.
One hundred percent.
Anyone else? Okay, Stuart, have we had um received any other public comments on this?
Yeah, the city has received no public comments on this item.
Okay. So if we have no other comments and no questions of the applicant or staff, then we will close the public comment portion, and we'll look for a motion and a second.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Watts again. Okay, Stuart, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gario.
Hi.
Commissioner Taliio.
Hi.
Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Hi.
Commissioner Watts.
Hi.
And Commissioner Yumans.
Hey.
Motion passes five zero.
Hey, thank you all.
Congratulations. Thank you.
You. Thank you. Thank you for having us so much.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that brings us to commissioner reports. Is that correct? Commissioner Taliio, you want to start it off? Anything to report?
Nothing.
Commissioner Watts?
No, I have nothing to report.
Commissioner Yumans?
Nothing.
Commissioner Trontrill?
Nothing tonight.
I make you last once in a while, you know.
I know.
And and I have nothing. Uh, did we have any subcommittee meetings? Seeing none? Okay, how about a uh development, community development director report?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, yeah, um, just real quick, just I I just wanted to echo that I thought that was a really good conversation. Um, it is really nice to hear some kind of just narrative and conversation amongst you all um to get your thoughts on things in in a in a meeting setting like this. I know sometimes we can get sort of bogged down in CUPs and modifications and architecture and kind of the the technical side of everything. Uh, so I was happy to um hear your thoughts on on uh the budget and what projects you like. And and uh I I think we should do things like that more often. Um, so uh hopefully, that's something we can we can work out and bring some some items that will just spur some discussion, let alone just, you know, voting on something. So I did appreciate that. Um, the only other thing I have is uh March ninth, uh, you know, uh, housing is going to, you know, housing is a is a hot topic right now, of course. And um I'm going to be giving a presentation to the city council on March ninth um about the history, you know, the current state and where we're going in terms of affordable housing within the city. Um, and also just housing in general, so not just affordable housing. Um, it's probably going to be a pretty comprehensive uh presentation, and it might be, no, I I think it it will be worth, uh, you know, the time if you if you want to watch it live or go back and watch it. Take a look. There's going to be a lot of information in there, uh, a lot of success stories. I know you, many of you are very familiar with uh much of the success of affordable housing in the city. And and going back to some commission comments tonight about uh which I agree with, that uh a lot of our community for many legitimate reasons, uh, doesn't know the the affordable housing success story in Temecula. Um, so that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get it out there a little bit more, um, as much as we can. Uh, as well as talk about the housing element effort that we're undergoing right now, which is a which is a, you know, a major effort for the city. It's an element of the general plan. Um, and you know, uh, one one other item too is uh the comments about getting out to the community, getting the feedback uh for budgetary reasons. Um, and but even at a broader scale, uh, part of the part of the effort uh with the general plan update is is uh going out and doing the True North Survey. Again, you you probably remember that. Um, it was it was on about a two, three-year rotation. Um, and it it got away, got away from that a little bit with um some of the other things that have taken place recently. But uh the True North Survey, you may recall, is a pretty comprehensive survey. Uh, it was tied to the Quality Life Master Plan. Um, it's kind of the 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 informative data set uh for the Quality Life Master Plan where we ask as many questions as we can possibly ask about what people want, what people like, what people don't like, where they want the city to go. Uh, and that is definitely an informative document for budgeting purposes. So hopefully, uh, that will will be um, uh, that's not going to get into the budget this year. It's 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 we're doing that over the course of this calendar year. Uh, but that is um, uh, you can look for that and let people know to to um to take it if they see it, if they see it. We've we've actually seen a lot of success lately in um getting respondents to surveys, not so much in coming to community meetings via Zoom, but definitely responding to surveys. That seems to be something people are more inclined to um participate in these days. Um, so we'll take it. We'll take whatever we can get. But um uh anyways, the 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 uh presentation's March ninth, so hopefully you can take a look. Um, and we can talk about it. And and again, appreciate the discussion tonight, and hopefully we can have more of those in the future. Think you're on mute, Ron.
Hey, I'm going to jump in here, Luke. I just wanted to thank you for your openness to hear and that your ideas. I'm really enthused by that. So thank you very much.
March ninth, is that the um joint meeting, Luke?
Uh, March ninth, yes. Yeah, you're right. You're up. You're right. So you'll all be there.
Uh-oh.
So there you go.
There you go. And if there's a possibility of squeezing in some training, doing some online training uh with regards, I know our distinguished attorney has given us all the new updates on the Brown Act and uh the Public Records Act and all the stuff that I really need to know. Um, so I thank you for that. You know, it's sitting here in my library now forever and ever. But there are other, I I I know that Watson's once in a while, they'll they'll come out with um a a text message that something is coming up. Anyway, we can get in on any of that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And you and I can talk more about that, um, what you would like the the commission to see as the chair this year. And and I'm hoping I'm I have a silver lining that uh um, you know, as with everything, COVID kind of put a hamper on trainings and what was available and what wasn't, canceled this. And I don't even mean just in person. I mean, even online, it's it's kind of been a terrible year for that. But uh hopefully, we'll be able to ramp that up again over the the next year, and we'll we'll definitely talk more and get something on the agenda.
Well, you all have done a tremendous job this year in spite of the pandemic, so it's appreciated, believe me. Uh, community development.
Hang on. Can I ask, can I ask Luke a question real quick? Um, so, yeah, I didn't realize that was our joint meeting that night. I'm actually working at the college that night, but um I think I can get it on my phone and participate if I have an idea of what time it is so that I can kind of figure out my breaks to
Yeah.
So if you can let me know.
Yeah, the 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 good news is is that that meet, those meetings have been moved to the front of the
Right.
council meeting. So there'll be like, you know, the welcome, the invocation, maybe a presentation if there is one from an outside agency, and then it'll be the joint meeting.
And so I don't, maybe you and Ron haven't figured it out yet, but will we all be speaking at that or will we just be there?
Um, we haven't, we haven't discussed that yet. We're kind of in the in the middle of putting just the, just some PowerPoint drafts together. And then and then we'll kind of work on, you know, how it all rolls out.
Okay, just let me know, and then I can kind of figure it out, try to figure it out with my schedule that night.
Of course.
I do have a thought on that, Luke. So, yeah, I would like to talk with you on it.
Okay.
Okay. Ron, you're on.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, very quickly, um, the director wanted to make sure that you were aware of a couple of projects coming up. One is our uh ARAM paving project in the business center. That's uh just um against the hills, just below Winchester, where Avenue to Alvarado, Rio Nito. They're doing all of those streets in there. They're pretty beat up. So that's going to be starting in March. And then also, uh, if you've been through Yanez de Portola lately, we just completed the Equestrian um RFBs, the rectangular flashing beacons for the crosswalks, for those riders that are in there, because as you know, that stretch of roadway is very, very busy. And more so now with the uh with the uh RCWD pipeline project ongoing, which is entering uh into phase two B, which means it's going to be starting to work south of Pachanga Parkway. So that alleviates some of that traffic that was backed up on Pachanga. So they're moving very quickly, doing a great job, and we've been addressing resident concerns. And then the last thing is only because Commissioner Gario brought it up, and he said thirty-three years ago, there was only one traffic signal. I wanted to let him know. We're at a hundred and twenty-seven and three more coming online this
Wow.
We have, yeah, we have quite an inventory of traffic signals and interconnect, um, making sure that they all work together. So made a lot of progress in the
I was here when there was only one. That's so scary.
And we had no money to put any in back then was the issue.
Hey, Ron, question on, so on the pipeline, when is the timeline that that's actually going to be done, did you say?
There's still about three or four months to go. Um, the actual construction of the pipeline, yeah, they're hoping that they'll be done by May before summer. But of course, with any big pipeline project like this, there's going to be chlorination. But of course, with any big pipeline project like this, there's going to be chlorination, there's testing, there's the pertinences they have to put in. So there'll be some continued work, but the main bulk of it should be done in the next three months.
And then, so now they're moving from Pachanga Parkway South, is what you're saying, to?
That is correct. Heading towards Jedediah.
Right, okay.
That is correct. And they've been moving, you know, of course, any project like this gets a fair amount of resident calls and complaints. But considering what we thought it was going to be, it, you know, the residents are really learning to take the alternate routes. And it's going okay. It's been going all right.
Yeah, I started going down there and I forget. I'm like, dang it. Okay, I gotta turn around. But yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ron.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, if there's anything else that moves us to adjournment to the regular meeting on Wednesday, March third, we'll look for a motion in a second.
They're moved.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Yoman. All in favor?
Aye. Hey, Luke, before you leave, can I talk to an IT person real quick?
Sure, let's, uh, let's go ahead and adjourn, and then everybody can leave, and then.
We are adjourned.
All right, we are adjourned. Thanks, Ron.
Night, everybody.